Okay, I'd like to lead this to the end of the United States of America and to bring out for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great majesty of the world.
Okay, this meeting has been properly hosted and all will be posting places. I'll vote you to approve the agenda. I'll make a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. And all in favor say aye. Aye. Polls the same time, the motion's carried. We are on to the student showcase. Today we've got fourth grade, some fourth grade writers.
Yes, so thank you everyone for being here, parents, teachers, everyone. I will have the fourth grade going, they have a part of their introduction here, but really one of the key takeaways is that writing looks very different than when I was in school from the way I taught five years ago and continues to evolve. It really becomes how do you coach the writer and not the piece, which is a very different kind of way of teaching. So, thank you to the four teachers we have here as well as all the students and families. So I'll let you start your questions. You can stand right up in front of the table, guys. Welcome to the fourth grade writing student showcase. Thank you for having us.
My name is Emmy.
My name is Jacob.
My name is Emmy.
My name is Lucas.
My name is Charlie.
My name is Judy.
What does writers workshop work like? We do many lessons, we do independent practice, and we have conferences, our sponsors.
Our learning targets, I can create and develop stories and characters that reveal, I can draft and revise within my own ability, and I can prepare for publication.
Specific strategies we tried, we use storyers to plan out how our story, the real storyers are writing, or if we want to, and form different, different parts of the story and break them up and find the heart of the story and the ending, reflect about true stories from our lives and let them grow into a realistic fiction. We had, we wrote on our notebooks all these different types of things that happened to us and we did what then grew from that.
Some of the strategies we tried, we use mentor texts to guide thinking work. So, mentor texts are a track that we write and publish, and we look up them to spark new ideas. And we also developed our believable characters by creating internal, external traits. And so, instead of just like making random traits, we took like traits and to make them fit together, to like say, why does this work, why should we put this in there?
For celebration, students create campfires and write each other's stories while drinking hot chocolate.
So the next part is they each brought their published piece that they worked on, and it's gonna be more like a round robin. So they're each gonna kind of set themselves up somewhere in the front here, and then parents, guests, and board members can go around, and they have specific parts highlighted that they wanna share with you, that they'll talk you through, and you can feel free to ask them questions and anything they go. So they'll kind of spread out, and then you can circulate to as many as you need to.
You can put some of your talent here. You can go to the chairs. Now, you can sit on the chair.
I can't, someone I think.
You know, who makes the most trouble?
Yeah.
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 Hi.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the one.
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 So some of the actual grades are like the way they asked us, well, if you look at our justice, we don't want to be like, she was smiling, she was just kind of way fuck, but it was a feeling of like an external, it's really, you know, it's just like, thank you for everything.
Certain conditions in the front row.
I tried.
She doesn't.
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 Two more minutes, yours, two more minutes.
Are any things again, are any things tomorrow, do you get to hang out of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, that's correct, and very efficient correction.
You should have listened.
Then all in favor let's say aye.
Aye.
Polls the same time, your motion's carried, then we got approval of the financial report, bill listing.
Do you have a second? Here we go.
Let me say, oh, okay, okay.
Well, great. Okay, voucher listing for October 22nd, 2019, general funds payroll, checks numbers 553752 through 553753, $4262, next check numbers 553754 through 553756, $4621.83, next checks numbers 553757 and 553758, $469, next direct deposit numbers 900050156 through 900050268, $106,983.19, next direct deposit numbers 900050269 through 900050376, $143,554.10, next direct deposit numbers 900050377 through 900050483, $151,192.66, next wire transfers for payroll liabilities, wires numbers 201900065 through 201900102, $285,258.20, for total payroll, $737,949.56, next accounts payable, checks numbers 53865 through 53945, $195,763.38, next AP wire transfers 201900072 through 201900095, $15,743.3, next credit card transaction number 92019, $55,371.9, next ACH direct deposit numbers 19200069 through 19200084, $1,926.72, for total accounts payable of $267,448.42, for total disbursements of $1,5397.98.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, and all in favor say aye. Aye. Polls the same time, your motion's carried. We are on to delegations to be heard, and Mr. Polisic would like to...
Hi, how are you guys? I'm speaking as community members.
Hi. That's all right. Okay.
So with our strategic planning committee and our communications group that we had and our discussion we had the last time, we were brainstorming ways of having an opportunity for the school board to engage more with community members other than just in the forum that I'm sitting in right now, which is having to sign up and speak. So the thought was if there would be a way that we could have at our monthly meetings, maybe the half hour beforehand, or whatever the timeframe happens to be, just open up for community members to come in and talk about how the district is doing, how the schools are doing, obviously not talking about personnel or talking about students, but just having a chance to talk about maybe curricular sorts of things, buildings and grounds, whatever that happens to be, that's more of an informal conversation instead of the more formal setting with a like board member tied to it. So I don't know if that's something you'd be willing to consider, or questions you might have, I don't know that I have any answers, but I would be happy to field any questions that you might have about our idea to try and get more conversations going.
I like that, I like the idea of getting more communication between the board and the community. A concern right off the bat is basically based on the number of people that come to these meetings in general. I would be a little bit hesitant to like explicitly carve out here's a half hour of time that is just dedicated for this. I wonder if we could make it as more fluid than, you know, the start of our, like, we say at seven o'clock, we will devote up to a half hour for this, you know, depending if there's lots of people or whatever, and then whenever that conversation is done, or at a half hour, we start the actual board meeting. That way, if no one shows up, we can start the board meeting at seven o'clock or right away or whatever.
Sure.
Or it would be at least at seven thirty. That way it kind of respects everyone's time.
Sure.
That might be a way of kind of compromising. Otherwise, I think most months we'll end up sitting here and maybe you'll show up, but, you know, yeah.
A half hour.
Hey, and if we do, that would be fantastic, right? I'd love that, but that way we'd kind of compromise.
The only thing, so I'm thinking out loud now, so we had our student showcase, which is great, because now all of the parents and kids might not want to be a part of that informal conversation, so I don't know, you start the board meeting, student showcase, then have here's this opportunity for us to, so I don't know if you'd like to leave the formal boards, board meeting per se, and say this is for a community forum or however that happens to be, and then go back into the board meeting afterwards?
Yeah.
Because I think this is, I mean, like, right now, this is nice to have an informal conversation, I'm not, I'm actually more nervous sitting here than when I sit over there, so, but it was just one of those things that we were trying to find ways to get, have this opportunity, whether it's, you know, invite staff to come into that as well, so that we have even a richer conversation, so just an idea that we had with our, with our community that we had.
I think it's a great idea, because I think there's definite apprehension for people to the officialness of signing in and being a delegate to be heard, and the fact that the conversation then stops.
Yeah. Too late, yeah.
Is the forum, the room that we post this in important? Really, because in terms of being intimidating, right, like, even if we say, all right, we're gonna start at seven o'clock, or we're gonna start the meeting and then take a break or whatever, like, if it's still the five of us sitting here and the audience out there, it's still, yeah, just that, the construct of where people are sitting is intimidating as opposed to like, we're all gonna hang out in the learning lounge or whatever.
In the walls, because it has a bunch of wrong tables right here, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, too.
Yeah, that's what my guess is, right over through here, we can make a nice, or we can go to the learning lounge, I mean, we can always, we can host our meetings wherever, we can always host in the learning lounge, it's a little bit more informal environment to do whatever everybody would like to, but we've got opportunities for classrooms nearby on the other side of that wall. From a posting standpoint, we would post a community forum for just community concerns, community chat, I'm not sure what the term would be, but we would be able to, and then we would post our regular scheduled meeting, you know, say approximately no later than seven thirty, in conclusion of the community forum, so. Here's what I like to say. Let's say we have a hot button issue. Sure. How do we control that from going down the wrong track? Let's say we get dealt with some personnel issues, how do we release that?
Well, when I initially introduced it, it was we can talk about things other than personnel and kids.
I know that, but that's, but, how are you, you can say that, but how do you stop that if that direction goes?
I'd be very comfortable saying we can't discuss this. This isn't, these are the ground rules, and we either all comply by them, or we can't have this conversation.
And I think we would have to, at the beginning of each one, if we've done that before, it's just to say, hey, we're here to listen and to dialogue back and forth, however, here are some things that we can talk about, and to really set those, it's probably no different than a delegations to be heard avenue where we have to shut it down if somebody got a little bit too far from this.
And I think to, maybe to help that, it would probably be important to have it be a single whole group conversation as opposed to many individual conversations, right? That would make it easier to control what's going on as opposed to, you know, if all five of us are sitting scattered around a room and people just, you know, walk up to you like a cocktail party, like, that would be a lot more challenging to actually make sure that we're not going, talking about things we're not talking about.
Oh, and having us all listen to the same person who's talking, so we all hear the same thing.
And we are a quorum.
Yep.
And we, everything has to be open.
Correct.
You couldn't have this awful thing, period, because everything has to be open. Your initial comment about not having everybody here and then respecting other people's time. I, I would love to do like we did with the calendar thing for other issues and have some prep time to get people engaged, interested, maybe it wouldn't be every meeting, but we do have a setup, maybe one quarter or something like that, where we have that half we have that half hour before a meeting so that people can be prepared.
Yeah, I guess it depends if the intent is to have a conversation about a specific issue that's pertinent or if the intent is just to give the community a chance to come and talk to the school board in a less official manner. Right? If it's about like the calendar, right, that was a specific thing, you know, we've known we've been working on this for months and so we could kind of plan that and, you know, give people that opportunity, but, you know, if a parent, you know, thinks of something or has some issue they want to discuss, you know, wait, asking them to wait for three months because our next quarterly meet with the board thing is not for three months from now, you know, they're either going to need to address it in a different way or they're going to forget about it. So that, I guess it depends what we want to try and accomplish. My guess is the intent was more the informal.
Open dialogue.
Open dialogue.
Yeah, and Phil, I'd really like your suggestion on this. If we're here at seven o'clock, we start the community forum with the student showcase, which is pretty legit. If anybody wants to stay, they can. If not, then we move into the official business aspect of it too. So that way we're kind of honoring everybody's time, including, you know, like tonight, maybe there were some things that the parents wanted to talk about. You know, because we've already got that forum of, we have up to ten parents here, it's a good, a lot of people. So, yeah, it can hurt, well, you can try it. And I guess Dean, if it starts going down consistently, can't talk about, we can't talk about that, then I think we could probably revisit that. But we can always set goals and ground rules, especially early in the year.
But going back to what I said before, if there are some of those issues that we could do, they come up, I'd like to go into those workshops.
Yep, yep, we certainly could. So if a hot button does come up on, let's say transportation again.
It doesn't have to be a hot button.
Well, just any topic.
If a lot of people have an interest in, or our staff has an interest in, that we can do the workshop. Get everybody to have a, right, up there to have a voice.
If you wanted to kind of set a specific topic on a meeting that if you wanted to spend thirty minutes in it, you could be, hey, we're going to start this, this school board meeting with the student showcase and that way we're not, you know, for kids. There's a lot of flexibility or you start at six thirty, if that's what the board would like, so. So we can certainly push that. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing is, when would we like, you want to try in January? I mean, November, December, it kind of, or end of November is, you know, December, we're kind of doing the holiday anywhere. If you something, we could obviously promote it and work through January.
Both those meetings are on like the eighteenth, they're, they're more towards the middle of the month.
They're more towards the middle of the month.
So I mean, it's not like they're right up against a holiday where you have much people gone. I don't see, I mean, if we're, if we set up the way we're talking about where it's not really going to waste anyone's time, I don't see a reason not to just start doing it sooner. Just a matter of can we orchestrate and make whatever changes. So would we start the meeting over there and then come here for the second half, or I mean, we could have a whole meeting in the learning lounge or the whole meeting somewhere else? I don't know.
If we want to get out of this kind of formal environment, if that's something that helps, we could go up to the learning lounge or we can, we can set up a, an informal, you know, area over here with some flexible seating too as well.
Why don't we do it this way? Start scheduling them. With the caveat is that the audience is too big to accommodate the size of the room, then we'll have to move to.
Yeah, let's not start that.
And so we can just schedule everything that way and then if we do get a big crowd.
Yeah.
I know that creates more work for you, John, because you're going to be standing up in two places.
Well, that.
Well, we're going if it's going to be a big crowd, because we've got lots of space up there. Because we, a forum environment and a conversation environment is different than this. Because as soon as we go into formal meeting mode, more than likely we'll have a few people. That's about it.
And we can do the recording of it.
Yep. Yep, shouldn't be an issue. Shouldn't be an issue. Might help with the acoustics a little better, so. Okay, all right, we'll set that up starting November?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we're on to the district committee.
Thanks, Jerry, your report. Yep. So donation, thank you to the Fight for Family. Thank you very much. I think it's that family member down there. Two hundred dollars towards the try and live the space classroom. Thank you very much, Chris.
Give me a motion.
I'll take a motion to accept the donation as presented. I'll say in five firsts.
Okay, motion accepted. All fair without say, aye. Aye, all states aye. Thank you. Okay, we've got personnel actions.
Uh, no personnel actions this month and information, we're nine weeks in. Friday marks the quarter, quarter mark for the school year, believe it or not. So already preparing for next year, obviously we've got a, some, some big discussions upcoming of calendaring and looking forward to, it's three quarters of the year.
Okay, we're on to committee reports. We have the Fight Dance Committee.
Um, so our committee we met last Friday and we've got a pretty good list of things to discuss. So I'm just going to go over hot topics there. First off, we did receive all of those three variables that we were waiting on to complete our revenue limit to determine how much we would set our money at for the year. So we received our membership count, we received our property values, and we received our equalization, our state aid. So bottom line, those three variables into the revenue limit worksheet, it provides us a levy of four dollars and fifty-seven cents, which is one cent less than last year. So we still went down, very low. So if anybody has any questions on the memo in the board packet, just let me know on that. I'd be happy to discuss that side of it. Um, we also went over our revenues and expenses for the first quarter and we looked at every, well, we went through a couple items and everything looks right on track from last year at this time. We're looking really good, we're in a good place, so we're just going to keep chugging on. And then we did talk a little bit about the ESSA school level report and that's a new report. This is the first time I'm filing it with the, with the state of Wisconsin. So we talked about some of our variables and the report I filed for Merton. And off of that, if people ask any questions, there is just a slight difference between our intermediate and our primary school as far as the dollar amount per pupil that's spent. And that comes down to the difference in staff salary and benefits. Essentially, our intermediate school has staff with more experience, a little bit higher benefits and less students. And therefore those costs are a little bit higher. So it's pretty easy for us to explain if you ever receive any questions on that. And I do have some of that information in the packet along with some talking points on it. I don't know if we'll ever get any questions on this, but it's good for the board to know and, you know, understand what this is. So I'd be happy to answer any further questions on that one too.
One more on that too is that number is going on our school report cards. So the cost per pupil is all going on our district and school. Per school, I do believe we're still kind of digging around, it might even go on the district per pupil too as well, maybe the entire district scorecard too. So that's a little bit of change. So that is a very public number.
It's a very public number and the purpose behind it is that the federal government wants people to look at that number and ask questions and really compare amongst your surrounding districts. So, so the purpose behind it is to look at that number. And so we may get some questions on that. We may not.
Kudos to Sheri and her team as well, because this was a pretty big deal to be able to have you to split all of the expenses out as well too. So thank you Sheri.
And then I did prepare a summary of our summer school information. It just kind of showed that summer school is a very important option for us at Merton. We do have a profit off of it based on, we receive money on our revenue limit per the number of students. So that's how we receive money off of that, not on charging our students that attend for it. So it is a very important option. It's something we want to keep doing. And then I prepared a couple different scenarios because that's something I know that the board is going to be discussing in the future regarding, are we going to maybe add another hour on session one and session two? If we do that, or are we maybe going to take a look at changing how session three works? So I put together some numbers that you guys can take a look at and can help with your discussions in the future. And then lastly, with the food service, Bethany provided me information that our lunch participation is up over last year for the month of September. So we're starting out the school year great. And then they also provided that they have some very exciting programs to get the students more involved, kind of like marketing programs. But they have, it's kind of, it reminds me of the whole S E L and they're having all these moves. So this food produces this kind of mood. It may be a calming food or it may be something that makes you strong. And they're going to kind of try and equate that in announcements that this week we're focusing on calming foods. And these are the foods that you might find, like turkey, it might be a calming food. Just to, you know, give the students something fun to look forward to. And at the intermediate school, they're actually going to be letting students choose what they want to see at one of our stations. So they'll be doing a couple taste testings and see what type of foods the students like the best. And then a few weeks later, they're going to be offering that at the food station. So just giving them some input. They'll be collecting feedback with iPads right after lunch. So just some ways to get students more involved and trying to, of course, boost more participation in our food program. But the food program's doing very well. I think that's about it unless any of you have anything else to add. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to the reports and updates and principal updates.
Hi there, how are you guys?
So this is just Jay and I putting together some things around what are our highlights, but also what does curriculum instruction look like as well. So that's one of the things that I think sometimes it's really important that we dig into. First of all, one of the things that we've been really heavily focused on, some of you are participating in this as well as the staff's learnings around social and emotional leadership team. So for the last, last year, a leadership team was compiled. It featured some board members, staff, administrators, and came together and this is kind of the timeline. So you can see the last meeting we had. It's really about trying to gather and build our capacity as a leadership team. And then knowing that that we're going to look to investigate, pilot and implement both for students and staff that we're trying to build the team, looking for next year to start doing some of that leadership within some professional learning. And then the following year, twenty-one, twenty-two, is really where we implement that full curriculum that we're looking at, whether for students, to staff, really building that social, emotional visability that we talked about. So you can see there, we met as a team. That was one of the highlights, pictures. Other staff learnings that are happening at the primary school is that writing professional learning continues to be ongoing. One of the things is that we had taken for some grade levels, had full days of professional learning, working with myself and Abby Klavandi, our instructional coach, and then also Martika Hazelwood as well. And then so either a half day or full day. And then we had, so we worked on some of our writing professional learning, how do we really plan and schedule? We also have been looking at, and that's that chart up above, what's it, MLSS or equitable multi-level support systems that we're looking for students. And really you can't see this well, it's really in the middle is that equity or inclusionary kind of practice you think about. And as you go out is really how we've changed the dynamics around how will we continue to develop curriculum and then also look at instruction. It's with that heart and center of the purple there is the collaboration. And then we have our instruction and then also data driven, so, or data informed, so that's important. Looking at some of that, it's the second bullet, social, emotional, again, but leadership team, we had some PD. Math and vision, we had the rep come out last week, provide some support that way. We are constantly looking at staff learning through our SLOs, our PPGs, those are due this week. Our teacher did self-reviews at the primary school. This is the first time that they were doing that as a whole building, really looking at their self and reviewing and then studying their professional practices. Announce observation, unannounced walkthroughs, coaching cycle, and team meetings. Those all happen there. And you can see that's a first grade team meeting happening right at the bottom of right. And then using FIDE, they had their convention that they went to since, that isn't necessarily my expertise and sometimes you gotta go out to find better, better ways. And then we also, one thing for me that I'm growing student, staff for myself is that I attend principal breakfast. They happen about once a month. And then I'm coaching with Cindy as well. And that's been a really great value for me as well to sit and, you know, come up, come up goals and go through some ways that I can continue to grow to. That's some of the stuff that's happening at the primary school.
And then intermediate school, uh, reading intervention discussions. We spent a lot of time on that on Thursday, just talking about how we are trying to meet the needs of some of our students who might struggle a little bit with reading in particular. The envisioned math training went on for our fifth and sixth grade teachers. One of the things I've been doing is giving handwritten feedback to staff. So Mrs. Emmerich does a great job, does a great job keeping it accountable. And I have a stack of teacher cards and she shuffles them every morning, hands me three, and those are the three people I'm in charge of giving feedback to. And the staff seems to really like that because it's not the electronic version of feedback. So I sit in a classroom for ten minutes, close my computer, turn my phone over, which is not easy for me to do, and spend ten minutes just focusing on what's going on in the classroom and then giving feedback and suggestions to the teachers that way. Our fifth graders are going to Biz Town this Thursday. Thanks to those of you that came in to do the, the interviews, it was, the kids, I mean, professional, I mean, they were interviewing better than I do. So they were really, really good. We went on an anchor space visit on Thursday over to Kettle Moraine Middle School, just to see the space that they have there and the things that we might try and incorporate here in our school. And then music and FIDE conventions went on. But our teachers, when they were here, that it's amazing how many meetings they had with one another or with me. Or sometimes they were just sitting in their room, hunkered down, trying to get, plan what was going to go on for the next quarter. So our quarter does end on Friday, which is pretty amazing that we're already quartered way through the school year. And then building leadership team focus, so our building leadership team has a member from each one of the grade levels and then Mrs. Cryeski, our counselor, and Mr. Vinnie, our, our tech guy, come in. We've concentrated on S E L for staff, just talking about different things that we can do for one another that don't cost any money. They're just, you know, things that'll help us be better people. What we're doing S E L wise for students, just trying to make those connections that we need to make. And then we spend a lot of time on the culture of the building, the things that we can do. And our, our building leadership team has decided that every Monday is going to be Merton Monday. So people wear blue on Mondays, Merton blue, Merton wear, whatever they happen to have. And then every month, a different grade level is going to be hosting a lunch. We don't do that very often at the intermediate school just because of how our lunch is set up. There's a lounge upstairs for seventh and eighth grade, then there's a lounge down here. But we had a great taco feast and I got done with recess, maybe just in time to watch them put all the food in the refrigerator. But it was good after I warmed it up.
So going off that strategic plan, also the primary school, you know, really looking at the values that have been set. And then this was over the course of the summer, June, July, August into September, I met with all staff member, majority of all, giving them opportunities to sit down and give me some ideas of how are things going, build a relationship. These were the themes, high leverage themes that they have seen that have come out of that, that also go to that, that strategic plan. Again, culture, relationships, you can see some of the highlights that they've seen as well as that, working on team dynamics, individual behaviors and leadership transparency. That was one of the biggest one that came out from majority of staff. And then second one was communication amongst colleagues, teams and administration. You can see there the BLT, the Building Leadership Team, how that, how those documents are shared, how does that come back to them? How do they have input when it's a small group again like Jay's with representation, what does that mean? And then the need for staff meetings, that is something that they were desiring and desire, is that they want to have staff, whole group staff meetings, which is a new one for, but that's okay. So we're working on some of this. And the last one was processes, consistency and follow-through through accountability. So classless, inclusionary practice, things like that. What are our practices? What are our processes? So those are all the highlights of things that we are looking, because when you ask a question, you're looking for ways that you can continue to support what outward staff is looking for. So that's what we're working on right now. So mainly the topic.
Uh, then we have some highlights here from, from the intermediate school. This very room has yoga for fifth and sixth grade and Mrs. Fry is, is working on that. And occasionally I can walk in and there'll be some student teams who are leading the yoga instruction for the day, which is really cool. Continuing on to the right, that's in Mrs. Hess's class, students having a book discussion. The cool thing about watching book discussions for me in middle school is that the kids are leading the discussion. The teacher just, she, she's sitting there nodding her head, not wanting to add anything that's going to, to change what the, the kids might feel about the book that they're reading. Lower right-hand corner happens to be the Tim O'Brien online learning where the students have actually built a building out of popsicle sticks and tape, very struck, you know, very strong structure. What you can see very well is they've also included plumbing, that's the straws in the back there. And they've also included a light that they have been able to turn on and off. There's a little red button there. But it's really cool. And then they've drywalled with, with paper. So it's, they're going through the whole process and honestly, the kids think it's, it's really cool. And some want to go to the next step and actually design their own. So this is something that they've had to make from blueprints that were provided by Tim O'Brien. Now the kids are thinking, well, how can I go beyond this? Well, they only have two days of class left, so it's going to be a little difficult to do that. But that online platform has been really cool for, for kids that really like the hands-on thing. And then in the bottom, there are four, four former Merton students who came to us last, earlier this month when we had our vaping discussion and they led the entire assembly, other than the announcements I did at the beginning of the pledge of allegiance. They were in charge of the whole thing. And towards the end, Mr. Maturok came in, the principal from Arrowhead, came in and asked him a couple of questions. But the hands up, the questions the kids had were amazing and they weren't doing it just to get the Arrowhead bracelet. They were doing it because they really had some questions about what was going on. And then later that evening, Mr. Maturok came in here and there was about ten of us that were in here with him just talking about the vaping and the concerns with vaping and so on. So if those assemblies for me are my chance to connect with kids on a different level and talk to them about things that are important. The one thing I stressed with them was, all of those kids there are athletes or in clubs. And you go to Arrowhead and you might not be an athlete, you might not be in a club, but you still have to be concerned about your own health. So I talked about that more so than I talked about being connected on a team. And that was the only bit of advice I gave to Mr. Maturok was, when those kids are talking, they can't just talk about sports. They can't just talk about clubs and how that's going to impact them. It's also just their own personal wellbeing.
So some highlights from the primary, principal, the pals have been up and running. The top two pictures there, we are giving announcements, which is very intimidating, just letting kids know that they, no one sees them. So they can, they can pause whenever they need to or go slow. So that was first left. And then we also have the sign, which has been a front and crew. We'll be doing that again tomorrow to update it since it ran out today. Something new at the primaries, lead with me, and that's with Lindsay Kent and Jackie Cryeski, our district guidance counselor. We met earlier this summer with the idea that we want to provide leadership opportunities to second and third graders. And so we have this rotating, like it's once a month, it starts next week on a Monday and it's five to six, five PM to six PM. And students in second grade through, to second, third grade get to come in and they can listen to a speaker speak. This person that's coming in the first time is from Arrowhead, so that's kind of an exciting thing about just leadership skills for our second, third grader. Building that entrepreneurship kind of idea. Other things is that we had the voting, we have the Merton Mustang Corral. So that at fall, it's in the cafeteria, so they got to vote. So everyone gets to give a choice between two things. It's not as private as the real voting is going, as you can see that. And so they chose to have try not to laugh videos, which happened today. The second thing is, the second feature on the bottom is really around, we had Nicole's Theater come on in to our second and third graders as well and they performed a play. We had some assessments going on. There's Ms. Venti and she's giving a participant out, running record to a student. It's an individualized one-on-one. So we are able to get some secure some subs to do that as well, because it takes a lot for a teacher to do it. And then the last thing is just around our, our food service. It's a dynamite program. I gotta give a shout out. What I need with my principal corral, like we go over what's going well, we also look at the menu, give suggestions. And they've been very open and helpful to knowing what kids like. They're giving some options there too. So that's a highlight to the report.
And I, we put together some stuff here for our PTO community connections. There's a, in front and the top center, there's the tent that I slept in on that Tuesday night. Rhonda's nice enough to come up and visit me. Some families came by too and they, I think they were surprised that I actually slept in the tent. But I did. The kids really enjoyed all the blow up stuff, the, the gerbil balls, or whatever those things are. They were the, were the highlight for the seventh and eighth graders, to be completely honest. And then in the morning, when Ms. Stein and her crew woke up, I made sure to get a picture of them at the corners. They were waving to the kids and they were coming off of us. That was, I mean, it didn't cost us anything other than maybe an extra lost night of sleep. But, you know, the owl competition that evening was, yeah, the owl competition kept me awake and then the dogs and then the car alarms. But other than that, it was really a comfortable night, about sleeping on the road.
It was, it was really good. And then just another highlights here is for fire prevention week, our entire primary went on, went on over to the village to get some instruction in how fire safety was. So everyone got to go across. It was a nice collaboration with our police department who sectioned off areas we could cross the road to, because there's no director out there and not going through the ditch. So that was important. The other thing that's happening is that we have a lot of field trips in the fall that include pumpkin patches and all these other things. So that's up there. That's our Ms. Bullis's classroom at the pumpkin patch. So those are some highlights.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions? Was I too quick on that?
No, no, that's just the right one. Comedy is all about time.
Okay, we're now on to the whole business. We have the twenty, twenty and twenty-one student calendar.
Sure. So as a continuation, thank you very much to our administrative team and our specialists and instructional team who got together on several different occasions and continued to take a look at all the feedback that was collected from all the different parties, our staff, board, as well as some of the things that we really wanted to continue to try to achieve too as well. So we did have about an hour and a half meeting and kind of compiled all of this. And obviously we have three calendar options that are presented, but know that there was probably about a dozen that we said what, what would we like to do too as well. So ultimately, we do have three options in front of us that we'd like the board to consider for next steps. And some highlights, basically still a hundred and ninety-five days for, for teacher contracts. But when we take a look at our student contact time, the three options do maintain the same number of minutes as, as we have in the past. And as highlighted before, that we do have a lot of bonus time, I guess. We're way above the DPI minimum requirement. So in each of these, if we do happen to have another winter, we can have approximately six snow days and still be, be okay with time, just given the length of our student day right now too as well. So I guess some differences as you take a look at, one of the things that we've, we've heard that we wanted to continue to have our staff have opportunities to either have some, some data discussions, vertical team discussions, staff meetings, some time together. We did take two professional days and cast them across what we're calling early start Wednesdays for our staff. It does not impact any school time, basically on, per each of these calendars.
Basically, per each of these calendars, we would like to request that our staff come in on Wednesdays, basically 32 of them. So basically give them a couple to start the year. And then ultimately have staff meetings from 7:45 until 8:30. When I say staff, team meetings, collaboration, PD, whatever it might be, one of those. I know our principals really enjoy that time with the students and still keeping that win Wednesday type of mentality where we do have a little bit longer with our staff at that time. If in fact, Dr. and Jay are working with our students in an assembly or something else like that too. So that's kind of the really big difference. The other difference here you'll see in the student calendar, from a staff calendar standpoint, is the idea that we have instituted three flex days for all staff next year. And that actually is, we actually have a week between summer school and when summer school would traditionally end and when teacher PD would start. So if in fact, so that gives John a little bit more time, but ultimately for, we can declare some days that the buildings, all building access will be open so that we can ensure that our teachers who may want to utilize that one week in August, August 17th through the 21st as their time to come in and do their flex days and prepare for themselves or with their team, that could be an option too as well. Because we did hear some concerns about the availability of some people's classrooms through the cleaning sessions and things like that too. So that's kind of the difference in the staff days. Still have the Mustang U days, still have some data days. There's a couple of differences that will replace some of those PD days. It was intentional to place them on a Monday instead of a Friday. We did hear that our staff is very tired at the end of the week and sometimes Friday learning is really tired, difficult. So in the past, we used to have Fridays off. Now we were looking for students, now we're looking at Mondays to kind of give our staff a little bit more boost so they don't get so tired to give them a couple of days off from that standpoint too. But with the three options for the students, obviously you can see kind of highlighted in there that there are three different days. There's two, the two main ones have basically, very similar to where we are right now this year, kind of getting out very early in June, if that's something that our staff or our community values or the board. Or the other piece is, is what we heard too, is an idea about, hey, what would happen if we had a full two weeks at Christmas? Well, we presented that point, thought it had some merit as well. Obviously you go a little bit longer in June that way. But ultimately, the question is, is do people want to go to school in December? Do they want to go to school in June? Do people want to go to school? We know we can't start before September 1st. After that, we have pretty much free rein.
I mean, between A and C, it's a difference of one day.
Correct. Yep.
Between A and C, it's a difference of one day. Difference maker here is to really be the half day.
Yep, the B. Yep, correct. Correct.
Does more work need to be done or looked at for those early start Wednesdays? How that's really going to be used and do we need it to be every Wednesday?
We would, we would like it to be every Wednesday, just from the standpoint of if we can make sure that vertical teaming. I mean, if we want to do true vertical teaming, we need two Wednesdays a month to be able to do that because you have to go up and you have to go down. We heard from the primary school that they'd like to have a staff meeting during that time approximately. And then we could possibly do some PD on that win Wednesday. So and the other piece to that could be is, is and we could rotate maybe a literacy day. You know, for instance, maybe Abby Klavandi and our literacy team, instead of meeting during their prep time or it could be a math day, they could possibly meet during one of those Wednesdays and we could possibly rotate that a little bit to free up some time during their normal eight hour day to kind of hopefully free up some time. But we feel that we can fill that with rich, at least meaningful, and hopefully we can get some value out of that. But ultimately, if we need vertical, we need two of them, a staff meeting and then some learning focused around the strategic plan, social emotional learning for next year, we still would maintain that too as well. So we feel that we've got a good sketch and obviously we could go back and kind of list all of those. But it could be kind of some behind the man stuff and you know, one month out because you know, at the beginning of the year, we need more vertical stuff. And that was really where, when we talked about it as a team, you know, having a full day for vertical at the beginning, we thought, well, maybe we take those first two Wednesdays after we kind of settle in for a couple of weeks. And the first Wednesday would be vertical up, the next one would be vertical down. So you can continue to have those conversations. But that is, is a little bit, there is, you know, obviously right now it's a little bit loose, but we will certainly be tightening that as well. And at the end of the day, if we don't really have for like, hey, it's the Wednesday before a break or something like that and we really feel like, hey, we don't need anything. It's just like, hey, guys, and it's your work day. Just some extra time too as well. It does take two days off of the time where they need to drive into campus and things like that too. Because we also have gas and daycare and things like that as well. So I guess, is there anything here that you would like us to consider, a different option? Or if, you know, obviously the big change, Katie's question is, is those Wednesday meetings, that's a pretty big change. Now, if you do take a look at our parking lots right around 7:45, they're pretty full with staff already. They're coming in, working early, obviously due to our release. So then the question is, is do you, what's the next step for our staff to kind of understand these options or gather feedback or whatever it might be? Because if we do want to gather feedback from the staff, I would host a meeting to kind of talk through each of the options to answer questions. Very similar to saying, what are we going to do on the Wednesdays? Or what are these flex days? Or what happens if an option B, you know, because in option B, you'll see it's 175 student contact days where two of the half days become basically comped out. So just to make sure that everybody can get their answers, are these questions answered in the most accurate way possible as well.
At this point, would we be looking to let them vote on the three options or something like? Like what's the, I don't want you to have or anyone to have a meeting with all of the staff to talk about three calendar options if we're not.
No, you would have to.
If we're not going to take their input or something.
Correct.
It needs to be purposeful.
Right.
It's supposed to be able to take like three different carrots.
Well, you can have, I mean, you can set it up either into a formal survey. We, I just, my point there, Bill, was just to make sure that there was a time to get people's questions answered. And then we can brainstorm, you know, you can have three, option A, good, bad and different. I mean, we can still have that conversation and at the very end, we can ask people to, hey, by the end of the day, if you could please just give us your feedback on some sort of survey, some quantitative survey to say, like it, love it, doesn't matter. Can live with it. Right? You know, I think those are your three options that I think they could possibly kick out. These are three options that from an administrative level, we felt comfortable presenting. And so for instance, if somebody said it's option B, then we go with option B. We were, we felt that this met our criteria in some of the work that we really wanted to try and accomplish this upcoming year.
I think a lot of the staff feedback that we've collected already is reflected in those options.
Right.
I guess from a survey perspective or a feedback perspective, would it then be, you know, like it, love it, can live with it? And a text box of why? Because that's probably an important aspect of it. Just to give people, or maybe need to have a hate this idea, or maybe a nicer way of stating that.
Yep.
Right, because that's different than I can live with it. Although I mean, I guess from some perspective, at the end of the day, we're going to decide, a decision will be made and they ultimately have to live with it. So I guess that.
I can go back and revisit, but we did our, like if you recall a couple of years ago when we did the spring break survey. We said, it was kind of three options, you know, you're like, yes, no, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Right, because for some people.
Wouldn't you do like a five point scale?
You can't. Yeah, right.
There's a reason it doesn't matter five.
Yeah, neutral versus.
Right, and that's one kind of a one to three is easy, you know, because then if you're neutral on it, basically then it's kind of like, yes, either way. Then you get kind of a third, third, third.
No, I think if we did it on a five point with three being neutral, we could then value more, you know, as an average, above average or excellent. And then above average and excellent versus don't like versus hate.
True. Yeah, it's easy. You're going to have three questions, you know, right on a one to five, it's really easy, then you can just do the numerics.
Yeah, then I would just.
But we'll be able to gauge that how strong the feelings are.
We should allow them to write in, you know, for each of those three as to why they felt that. Because some people feel strongly about it for a particular reason that might be really important. And it might not be as important to those group as well.
Has there been any discussion about asking parents?
Yes, that was.
Yep.
Because I know these have different effects on my life.
They do. Option B probably is the most effective, is the most effective because that was the feedback. So Jennifer, to answer your question, I did have a very informal conversation with our PTO and we were kind of talking anyway. And as you can imagine, around the table, there were 10 different families represented. It was a third, a third, a third about yay for Christmas, no, I'm going to be off in June, you know, but I want to get ready for Christmas. And the people who watch my children can't do it because of a lot of different personal reasons.
Well, and next December is kind of an outlier for how this is going to shake out. So if we go with option A, the last day of school is December 18th and you're not coming back to school until January 4th.
Yep.
That's an enormous amount of time for families.
Yep. It's a long time.
No, I don't.
It's an enormous amount of time for our kids to be away from.
Yep.
School.
Well, yes.
That's like.
It's likely. Correct.
It's on Friday. The 24th is a Thursday, 25th is a Friday. So if you have the whole first week, then you're off the.
So that would be a question.
Friday, the 18th is your last day and then the first is a Friday. So then you have first, second, third, Saturday, Sunday, fourth.
So it's a long time.
Oh, I see. Yep, it is a long time. It's almost like that, that break you had for college, you know? And I guess that's kind of the dialogue, it's two full weeks. And that's really the dialogue, is that something that the board is willing, I mean, is willing to consider?
I'm willing to consider anything. I just think from a community standpoint, that's going to be a huge challenge.
From a just engaged student standpoint and a teacher, that is hard to come back to as a teacher. Like you move a lot.
Right. So I guess my question would be is, is let's just say the staff loves two weeks off at Christmas. Is that something, is that something we are willing to listen to? Because if we're not from a community standpoint, because that's the one that has the most nuclear option to it, is option B. I'm sorry, no, option, I'm sorry, option A. Option A. Because we would like to present.
Fair point. We were going to say we're going to listen to you, but.
Correct.
Everybody loves that. We're like, no.
Right, if we're concerned, our biggest concern with that is student engagement. And that's why from a standpoint, option C at least gives you that extra day in there as well as the day before Memorial Day, which we heard was very.
Option C is four days shorter for the Christmas break.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
But the benefit it provides that it didn't last year or option B does, where your first Christmas break day is actually Christmas. This would be.
It's not a perfect rule.
Those are.
Well, on a calendar, changes every year, so.
It does, it does.
I was just like, if you're already off two weeks, you know, 14 days, what's the difference between, from a student's coming back? Like there must be some curve of number of days off versus how hard it is to reengage them, right? Like there's some tipping point of, you know, what's the difference between 14 days and 18 days? Like two days is like, okay, that's not hard to reengage them. I guess Jay, how was today? Does that make sense?
Four days are difficult.
Yeah, today was, I mean, there.
Well, I guess that's my point, right? If four is, after four is all hell breaks loose, then does 18 matter compared to 14? Like is that going to be worse to reengage students?
Yes.
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 So just the situation gets worse.
Yes.
I just based it on like being a mom and seeing how the wheels fall off.
Three weeks, four weeks. If we take off over two weeks, then it's going to take us.
I think this is the right way to hire an administrator, there's to deal with the calendar.
But the other problem with that two full weeks off is there are people who cannot take off work during that time or have one of the two people working in the household do that, which is huge. I can't, I can't take off work.
It's a huge burden. Lots of people, you don't have to do with it, but lots of people do have to do with it. I think it would be really difficult. I mean, I'm just thinking about all I know and. It would have been impossible for even other people. It would have been really difficult. So I guess is the consensus on the board, option A is something that we should table because of the impact to the community and the families?
And the students.
And the students and educational, yeah, yeah, okay, all right. So we will present options B, which is very similar to us getting out at the same time this year. And then, or something of a bummer, which gives a little bit of karma wise in there too as well.
Well, it gives back that Memorial Day, Friday, right, which, yeah, but for.
Isn't that the same problem? I don't understand the difference between. You're saying it's more burdensome to have three days off at Christmas.
The four days that I would be affected where I'm still at work and don't have a holiday. This is one day?
This is. Sure, it's one, like, it's, sure. But, so the problem is the same.
Again, a personal day. I don't get four personal days.
Do you see what you find out, Ron, and bring it back to us?
Well, so, no, this is what I'm going to do then is, so what I'm hearing is we have two options that we're going to present to our staff. I am going to host a meeting to kind of explain both of the pros and cons. I am going to create a survey then that has a ranking for those two options, one to five, one being hated, five being loved, three being don't care. So kind of engage that.
I have a rank on it. I want this one and this one.
You're going to get.
Rank of one and two.
From someone who unfortunately has a side of surveys like this one.
Just it's, this one's one, this one's two. That's it.
I'm not gravitating.
Then you have no question then.
Totally gravitating.
Why do we have both then if it's going to.
We can, it's very easy to do a sliding scale.
Because it's going to know the passion level. Because if you just say yes or no, then it's just gotten like the family.
We can count from a, from a, from a disertive standpoint, it'll be easy.
You know, we're going to do our old study business. I can get a show with.
I already have a dissertation, but somebody else might want to take this on.
Okay, but it'll be interesting. We do it both ways.
Yeah.
But it'll be interesting to see what your results are.
I need to compare those statistics.
Because I think.
It's going to be.
Jennifer, Chris.
Where the bell comes, yeah.
Christian opinion, I think they are right, but we'll get some information.
Got it. I will get that and then by the next month, then we will have something to deliver to go by.
Okay, we're on to new business. Pool of district budget tax levy.
Yep, and as Sherry and the finance committee discussed it all, basically we have to set our levy. And basically the administration is recommending that we levy to the business. And the numbers enabled to us to do that is listed there. So just looking for a motion to ask presented.
I'll make a motion to recommend to certify the tax levies of Fund 10, $4,449,371. Fund, do I do it all together?
Yep, yep, to all, yep, yep.
Fund 38, $7,795. Fund 41, $1,000 for a tax levy of $4,458,166. Be it resolved at the property tax levy to fund the 2019, 2020 Merton Community School District operations, be set at $4,458,166 and that the necessary certifications be forwarded to the clerks of the appropriate municipalities.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? This was also the recommendation of the finance committee.
Nice side to the administration.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All favor then say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion to carry. Okay, we are on to future meetings and agenda items.
November 18th is the Monday before, kind of the long break and things like that. And we will set a board workshop for a community forum at 7 o'clock. We will meet in the Learning Lounge, Intermediate School Learning Lounge. So I'll remind everybody and we'll advertise this and broadcast it too as well. The agenda then, I will bring back underneath full business, some calendar information. If the board, we will make it an action item, if the board feels strongly about the information shared and they want to make a vote, we certainly can set the student and staff calendars moving forward too as well.
Okay, when you make that, the Learning Lounge meeting with the public, you can make that in words today. Can you make sure that people know where the Learning Lounge is? Because anybody from the primary school who hasn't been here will have trouble.
Certainly, we'll make some signs. Yep, we certainly can.